Can't hold out my mic. But they could hear me anyways. Um, fill out a blue card and hand it to Jessica and you'll have an opportunity. If you'd like to speak on something on today's agenda, wait till that item comes up and you'll have a chance to speak, but you also have to fill out a blue card and hand that to Jessica. Our blue, uh, piece of paper slip form. Okay, let's get started. Uh, roll call please.
Commissioner Charleston will be marked absent. Commissioner Hovey?
Here.
Commissioner Laney?
Present.
Vice Chair Lee?
Here.
Chair Oblea?
Here.
Uh, would you all stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance? Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every heinous justice for our people. Thank you, you may be seated. Uh, okay, this is the time for public comments. Is there any card for public comments, Jessica?
No, we have not received any.
Okay, then we'll move on to, uh, item four. Do we have any additions or deletions, commissioners? Nothing, staff, any deletion?
None from staff, sir.
Okay, we'll move on. Well, that's why I like this meeting to run. Quick. Okay. Consent calendar, item five. Do we have any comments? If we don't have no comments, do we have a motion to accept consent calendar?
Motion to accept.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Hovey?
Aye.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
All right, item number six, presentation. Eric, you have something for us?
Uh, yes, sir, we do. We have Kimberly Wright, our economic development coordinator, is here tonight to give you the same presentation that she gave council last week on the results of the restaurant survey that, uh, the city published online. Uh, I've read through it, it's really interesting, I think you'll find it as well, and it's something we're certainly going to be paying attention to as we continue our work on the remaining projects here in town, so Kimberly.
Thank you, good evening Chairman Oblea, Chairperson, our Vice Chair Lee, and, um, Planning Commission, city staff, and members of the public, thank you so much for being here. As Eric said, I am here to share the feedback from the questionnaire that was put out in October in regards to the community's desires for restaurants here in the city of Eastville. So, um, not only do we recognize the fact the community has a strong desire to have an elevated dining experience, with the city staff also recognizes that, so much so that it is part of our strategic plan, it is target three, goal three, to elevate the dining experience here in the city. There is a huge retail sales gap in food and beverage services, and that equates to over seventy-one million dollars of leakage in restaurant and beverage sales, and we have so much to capitalize here, this could equate to twenty-three restaurants to absorb this gap, and we want to create a food culture here in Eastville to help absorb this, to reverse the leakage, and, um, oh, are we gonna, I'm sorry, excuse me, um, the following categories are the categories that were used throughout this presentation, fine dining, premium casual, casual dining, fast casual, and fast food. Eastville at a glance, so the bottom two categories here show about eighty percent of the restaurant makeup in the community, so we see that there's zero in fine dining and zero in premium casual, so we really want to work to balance this out.
So, if I might just interrupt just a quick second, um, these, these slides, if you go back to the previous slide, this slide and, and these slides were used, um, for a windshield survey last, uh...
Yes, and, yes, in July, the windshield survey was, um, shared with our city council, and so these are the survey, um, the survey categories that were done in July and presented, so these next four slides I should share, um, were results of that windshield survey from July.
And it was presented in cau- uh, my question...
It was presented to, oh, to commission as well.
In June.
Okay, good to know, thank you, prior to my beginning here. So, we have the breakdown here of the drive-throughs in the city. Twenty-one percent banks, as you can see, and the biggest is thirty-eight percent with fast food. And here we see that seventy-nine percent of the restaurants do not have a drive-through, and twenty-one percent of them do. Eleven fast food drive-throughs, and there are three fast casual drive-throughs. So, in the six weeks this survey was out to the public, we had eighteen, one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five total responses. And the following are the questions that were asked in the, in this survey that was, um, made available through social media. First question is, on average, how many times a month do you dine at a premium casual or fine dining restaurant? Fifty-one, uh, fifty-one percent of the respondents said that they dined in these restaurants one to two times a month. Thirty percent said they dined in these types of restaurants three to four times a month. Also asked, when visiting a restaurant outside of Eastville, how far do you travel? Forty-two percent of the respondents are leaving about sixteen to twenty-five minutes outside of the city of Eastville. And this goes hand in hand with the last question, what top three cities are you traveling to? Top three responses, Ranch Cucamonga, Chino, and Corona. Are you leaving Eastville for dining choices because of the lack of food options available? And an overwhelming response of yes, ninety-eight percent are leaving the city because they do not have the choices here that they desire. What restaurants do you typically visit when traveling outside of Eastville? And this is a word cloud, of course, and the larger ones are the ones that were most responded to the most, there are some very unique, niche-y places on here, The State, Eureka, and we think those types of restaurants would be a great fit in our community. Top three choices or reasons for choosing a restaurant? Food quality, serve qual- service quality, and menu variety. And would you visit premium casual or fine dining restaurants if they were here? And again, overwhelming response, ninety-eight percent said yes, they would visit them if they were here. What type of restaurants do you like to visit for celebratory occasions? Top choice is steakhouse, second seafood, and the third is cultural/ethnic, and we had quite a few responses on the steakhouse and quite a few under cultural and ethnic, so everything from a dumpling house to Korean barbecue. Are you within the city of Eastville during, uh, are you in the city during lunch and dinner hour? And sixty percent of the respondents said they were here both for lunch and dinner, and this is very consistent with our daytime population figures.
And it's also consistent with, sometimes we have a lot of people that say, we're just a commuter city, and so everybody leaves our city, but the, the, the difference is, is we have a lot of, uh, people within our community that are working shift work, and so they might work a swing shift, they might work graveyard shift, and so they are here during lunch and dinner, um, and they are, and so when we go out, and, and when we're here eating, and we go out to eat at lunch, we often see people in suits and ties and conducting business, uh, within the city of Eastville, there's a lot of people that have home-based businesses in Eastville, and, and one of the challenges that they, they're experiencing is, is they're not able to grow their business, or there's no incentive to grow their business, because then they, if they have to get an office space, they have to then commute to Corona, or Chino, or Ranch Cucamonga to get office space, since we don't have office space yet in Eastville, and, and so, one of the challenges is, is a lot of people have home-based businesses, but they conduct, instead of bringing a meeting to their living room, they have a professional meeting at a restaurant, and so we have a lot of people using restaurants as their, uh, place of, of business as well in this community, we're wa- we're observing that out in the community as we, as we're around in these restaurants, and that's a interesting thing that's different than a lot of communities are experiencing, so.
Yes, absolutely, great point. Okay, next question asked, was when dining out at a fine dining restaurant, how much do you typically spend per person? And the largest amount was thirty to forty-nine dollars per plain, per plate, and going hand in hand again is, um, would you visit a restaurant that offers plates from twenty-five to fifty dollars? And the largest response was seventy-seven percent said yes, they certainly would. What is your opinion of fast food restaurants in Eastville? And the biggest portion, eighty-five percent, between too many and just enough, there's eighty-five percent of respondents said there are too many or just enough, so eighty-five percent is a big makeup there. Next, ask, some cities provide incentives such as city grants as part of an economic development program in order to attract new businesses, and then we wanted to know, oh, sure.
Can we go back to that last slide?
Sure.
So, the survey is suggesting that, uh, the residents say that we have enough fast food, or...
They're saying there's either, yeah, forty-five percent said there's too many already here, and then thirty-nine percent said there's just enough, so come...
But then nine, sixteen percent say not enough, so that leans more towards the enough, like, there's not too many there.
So, so sixteen percent are saying they want more fast food?
Right.
And everybody else is saying there's either enough, or there's too many.
So, that's about forty-five percent, no, fifty-five percent saying that we don't have too many?
No, no.
Yes. There's about fifty-five percent of people saying we don't have too many fast food restaurants.
Right, yes.
That's what I said.
Yeah.
Right, and with it just enough, that like it just the way it is, so no additional, but it's just, it's good the way it is.
But remember, there were only eighteen hundred people who filled out the survey.
Well, yeah.
For our size.
Right, eighteen hundred and fifty-five.
A cross-section of our community, so...
Right.
So, we gotta take, take it the way it is, or you could, you could use that argument with, uh, we don't have enough, it's only eighteen percent, so, I mean, we want to accept the, the results as they come, and not complain about how many people took the survey, so, yeah, go on, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine.
I just wanted to make it clear what I heard.
So, we, we went on to ask them if they would be, if the community would be in favor of offering an economic development program as part of an incentive to get the right restaurants here in our community, and eighty-eight percent are on board with the city offering such an incentive program. What is your opinion of drive-throughs in Eastville? And again, similar to the last five, we have eighty-two percent of the respondents saying there are too many or just enough, so those two categories combined. Should city council take action to limit drive-throughs in Eastville until we have that better balance of all five categories? And seventy-four percent said yes, they would like to see some kind of action in order to get a better balance. And these are just some of the verbatim responses from the survey, uh, the lifestyle from the people who live in the city, walking, jogging, family gathering point, do not reflect the food choices that we have here in the city. Fine dining in Eastville will make the city more upscale and bring in more outside revenue. We are always leaving and driving far to have a five-star dinner, and also to celebrate special occasions with dinners, so it'd be fabulous to have local options here in Eastville. And a couple more, enough fast food, please offer healthy food options, offer more unique, freshly prepared food options at restaurants. The Field House in Norco and the Meat Cellar in Chino are great examples of what I'd like to see in Eastville, nice food and wine beer selection, and evolving menus based on season. In addition to more restaurants, more nightlife with entertainment. So, to summarize, the residents have shared this feedback to support the need and desire of having an elevated dining, you know, experience and more opportunities here for dining. Respondents expressed the development should focus on premium casual and fine dining categories, and less on the fast food options. Respondent, respondents also expressed they are in support of a business incentive program, and would like to see us help get those restaurants here in the city. So, these are just some samples of some diverse and modern dining that we think would fit really well into our community. These are some great restaurants and restaurant concepts that have outdoor spaces that could bring community to get together as a gathering place, make it more of a destination, a food culture, just have the modern, more trendy vibe. And then fresh quality menu options, these are some great fresh food items, hope you're not hungry. Places that have great wine pairings and a white, a great wine list would be preferable. And then here are some photos of food hall and open eatery concepts. The Anaheim Packing House. Liberty Public Market. The Food Lab, a great trendy hip place to go, you don't know what you want for dinner, but you know you can go there for the experience and find what you're looking for, and have a great place to hang out with your friends or family. And then urban wineries and breweries, with the history of wineries here in the area, we think that we should definitely explore some concepts such as these. Definitely more an urban appeal. And there are some star, um, conversations that have been started, and here are a few of them. Heroes is very interested in coming to the city. They have several locat- or a couple locations, they have one Riverside, one in Fullerton, and they also have Roscoe's Famous Deli in Chino Hills. It's a very fun family atmosphere, but they also have lots of beer on tap, and, um, definitely hearty portions. Canitaro's, home style Italian, their location is in Chino, it's family, uh, family-owned, and they have great authentic Italian cuisine. Luna Modern Mexican Kitchen, of course, modern Mexican cuisine with great presentation. Spoggy's Italian Restaurant, their hidden gem in Upland, they are family-owned as well, but they have beautiful Italian presentation and, um, great menu with white, great wine list. And then Stonefire Grill, lots of fresh food options, salads, great prime rib, and it's a family atmosphere. The Meat Cellar, the Meat Cellar is a very unique restaurant where you go and you pick out your own steak, and they have a great wine list, and I think this would do really well in the city, there's a lot of respondents looking for a steakhouse, that was a big response that we saw with Steakhouse, so I think this would be great. And how do we make this work? It's all about strategic partnerships, working with developers, restaurants, our real estate brokers, getting all on the same page, communicating about what projects we have going on and what the community's needs are, of course. We have a great story to tell with the highest household income in Riverside County, we're at a hundred and sixteen thousand, which is nearly double that of Riverside County's. Sixty percent of our population make over one hundred thousand dollars or more. Trade area households with a fifteen-minute drive time. Daytime trade area population is over four hundred and forty thousand, trade area population is over three hundred, or nearly three hundred and seventy-two thousand, and the Eastville daytime population is nearly forty-six thousand. How do we make it happen? We, again, identify the survey results, we match those results with the restaurant site criteria, we work to find, um, a suitable site, work on site selection. And we develop and introduce programs to attract the right restaurants, or attract the developer to bring the right restaurants, a program that, um, the community seems to be on board with. And we develop and distribute economic development marketing collateral, we tell the story because the numbers that I just shared, the numbers don't lie, there's some really great statistics, I can't say the word, statistics, and I think we should definitely remember that we can't have our second until we have our first, so we're gonna focus on what we can do. And that concludes my presentation, if you have any questions, please feel free.
Questions, commissioners? Comments? Commissioner Lee?
Uh, quick question, um, you said the, the results and the, the actual PowerPoint is available on our website?
It will be.
It will be?
Uh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, no, no, yes, after today's commission meeting, yes, we are going to post it online.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Have we identified any sites specifically that might be suitable for, um, fine dining restaurants?
We have a conversation going with a couple developers, we're going to, um, with one of the, we met with one of the restaurateurs yesterday who's interested in bringing their concept here to Eastville, and so we do have a couple developer meetings coming up soon, um, we're gonna talk to the station, we're gonna talk to the Palopolis property, Toulouse, and, um, so we are...
All projects are...
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
So, it could be soon that we could have something nice.
Staying very hopeful, yes.
Commissioner?
Is, is there like a marketing material available so that, you know, we can kind of take it and then just distribute it to some of our friends who have restaurants, or, uh, folks that we know that have restaurants?
Yes, we're actively creating a piece actually right now that highlights a lot of those numbers that I just shared, it's kind of a one sheet to start with, so I would be thrilled to share that with you once it's officially approved, very soon.
No other comments? Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Let's move on to item number seven. Uh, public hearing, seven point one. Uh, we have a conditional use permit for alcohol sales.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, yeah, uh, your one hearing for tonight is a conditional use permit for alcohol sales at, uh, a new Mod Pizza location in the Goodman Commerce Center, their, uh, Station Retail Project, Myra Salas is the planner for that, and she will make tonight's presentation, Myra? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nurse, and good evening, Chairman, and members of the commission. The project before you this evening is for a conditional use permit to allow the sales of beer and wine, no distilled spirits for onsite consumption, at a new Mod Superfast Pizza. Mod Pizza is located in the Station Retail Portion of the Goodman Commerce Center, at the northwest corner of Hamner and Cantagalliano. Mod Pizza is located in the future tenant of building CR4, outlined in red. On the far left of the retail building is the Goodman Commerce Center, located on the northwest corner of the site. The photo before you is the exterior of the future location of Mod Pizza. And this photo shows the interior of Mod Superfast Pizza. We went through our site, um, site visit last week, and so we took these quick photos for you to, to show to you guys. The floor plan shows an outline of the proposed storage location, alcoholic beverages would be at the register served at the pickup counter, and a cup or consumed from a can or a bottle. A beer/wine display is for the pros to be located immediately adjacent to the cash register. Beer and wine not on display would be stored in a cooler, located in the kitchen. An outdoor patio is also proposed, shown in green, where alcohol may also be consumed. Costco is currently the only existing alcohol sales at the Goodman Commerce Center, however, other future alcohol sales are expected at the station, at the Good, at the Goodman Commerce Center, besides Mod Superfast Pizza. This is an illustration showing all of the onsite alcohol sales within the entire city of Eastville, and blue are the existing, and red is the proposed. After the police department review, typical conditions of approval were provided, for example, time restrictions in which the alcohol can be served, requirements for surveillance and monitoring, employee training and consumption boundaries. Based on the findings of approval, Mod Pizza is consistent with the general plan and zoning code. As well as the Airport Non-Use Commission, and has been determined that the use will not be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve conditional use permit, PILN 1820063, subject to conditions of approval. Uh, staff recommends that planning commission approve conditional use permit. The commission does not wish to approve the project, here are other options for the commission, approve the project with additional changes or conditions, continue the public hearing and direct applicant to make revisions, or deny the CUP. This concludes the staff's presentation, staff is available to answer any questions. The applicant's representative is also here this evening to answer any questions.
Um, do you have any questions for the staff, commissioners? Uh, so, at this time, I'll open the public hearing, public hearing is now open. Does the, uh, applicant wish to speak? You have a slip for that? Okay. Just give us your name, please.
Good evening, my name's Dean Vaskus, and I represent Mod, uh, Superfast Pizza. So, uh, our position on this is that we are prepared to accept the conditions as presented by the, uh, staff if it's agreed upon by the commission, and I can answer any of the questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Do I have any other cards for this?
No, we have not received any.
Thank you. So, at this time, I will close the public hearing, public hearing is now closed. Uh, do we have any discussion on this item? Nothing at all, huh? Okay. Uh, everything looks fine to me. Uh, do we have a, uh, does somebody wanna bring a, um...
I make a motion to...
A motion?
Approve a conditional use permit for alcohol sales at Mod Pizza.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Hovey?
Approved, yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lee?
Aye.
Chair Oblea?
Aye.
Motion passes four to zero.
Congratulations. That was easy, I like that kind. All right, let's move on to item number eight. Uh, commission business. Do we have any commission business? Nope, no, nothing there? Item nine, staff report? I think we have a staff report, don't we?
Yes, I'm, sorry, Mr. Chairman, we do, uh, we have a brief slide presentation. Just wanted to take you on a quick tour out through the Goodman Commerce Center and the, the commercial buildings that are up there. Uh, Goodman hosted a, a tour last week for, I think we had about ten or twelve city staff there, or city manager and some of his staff, and, um, most of the planning department went out there to look at the project, and we just thought we'd bring back some pictures of that, so, we're looking at three Goodman buildings, they're commercial buildings, three, four, and five, so one of them is the one that Mod Pizza's gonna go into, and then the in and out. So, just to reme- to refresh your memories, these are the two Goodman buildings, uh, it's three on the left-hand, or four on the left-hand side, and five on the right-hand side, uh, so those are two of the buildings we'll show you, uh, that, that's the side facing out.
You like to show them at Mod Pizza?
Yeah, um, the pointer doesn't work on here, but, uh...
It's the one on the left?
The one on the left.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jessica, right there, that's, that's Mod Pizza and that little outdoor dining area, that's those people sitting there with their, their beer that we just allowed them to purchase. So, um, so that's, that anyway is the street-facing side, and the other thing I'll point out here is, and it was really a, a key feature in these buildings, the backsides of these buildings all look like fronts.
Very nice.
They, they came in with that actually from day one, but there's showroom windows facing out toward the street, and then, of course, in, you know, interior to the project.
So, it can be done then, right, Eric?
It can be done.
Yes.
It most definitely can be done. So, we've raised the bar, once again. Uh, and this is then the interior of the project, so facing back in, inside where the actual shop fronts are gonna go. So, uh, we started off with a little introduction, that's Ward Mace there, if you've never met him, from Goodman, uh, gave us kind of a walkthrough of what the project was all about, and then we bravely put on our safety gear and tromped out there to look at the project. So, we'll start off here, this is building, this is CR3, this is the Starbucks building, so Starbucks will be in here, in the end closest to the left, so those big dark areas are gonna be there where their signage goes, that the mermaid logo and stuff is gonna go up there, uh, and then have a couple pictures of some of the amenities that they're building. So, in front of that building are two different amenities, this is a planter, so that's a one-piece, I'm, I'm sorry Daryl isn't here, because Daryl's a concrete guy, this is all about concrete, uh, but that's a one-piece poured-in-place, uh, planter that they put there, and then, on the other end of the building is this, and they said it took them...
Thirteen days.
Thirteen days to build that, it took them like nine days to build the forming, and then pour it all at once, it was a major...
There's gonna be LED lights wrapped around the bottom, so it's all gonna glow at night.
Going, very nice.
And, uh, actually, these were taken a week ago, so it looks different than this now, because they were, there were people just all over the place, nailing all this stuff down. So, that's that building, and then we started walking over toward buildings four and five, so on the right-hand side is four, and then five, kinda towards the back there, that That crane that you see there was lifting the air conditioning units up onto the roof that day.
They needed extra special-sized air conditioners because the volume inside with the fourteen or sixteen-foot ceilings uh, needs extra power air conditioner, so.
Yeah, so the, these buildings, one thing, when you go out there, uh, they're quite tall. And my first impression anyway was when I went out there was, these are way taller than I thought they were gonna be. But anyway, this is the fa- side facing Cantugalliano, so where those, where that wood planking is now, that's gonna become shop windows, you can see a little farther down going into the slide, uh, is what looks like a storefront, but that, again, that's the back of the house. So all along the back here, uh, and there, there'll be no public access back there. Uh, that's strictly for the, the shops to go back there and uh, get into the back of the, of their stores.
You might just comment that, that those palm trees right there are about ten to fifteen thousand dollars a piece. And so when you start going out there and adding up those, it adds up pretty quick.
Yeah, you can see in some of the other slides how many of them there are, there, there are all over the place. So this is the uh, the front of one of those buildings, so on the far left side there, that's the Mod Pizza. And we have a pic, you already saw the pictures of, of the inside of that, but you can get a sense of scale here with the workman on the right-hand side there and then the height of those buildings. And they're planning some really interesting and unique signage, we approved amendments to their sign regulations to allow them to do some really kind of more interesting sort of cutting-edge uh, type signage on the buildings. And that's an, another shot of that same building. And then this is the plaza area interior to the project, so that is a fountain. So that's gonna be a fountain uh, there, and then if we go, that's a closer shot of that. And then on the other side, as you go between those two buildings and out toward the corner is this, and that's a combination of fountain in the middle there and a planter, so a lot of water features going on, which is, you know, again, something that was approved in the designs and, you know, is now being implemented. And he, that's the space between the two buildings, and you can get a sense again of the scale by the equipment there. And then that is just an overall shot of, that's uh, CR five, so that's the one that's along Hamner. And yeah, I didn't, well, in the slide that you had uh, of the interior where Mod Pizza is going, I didn't include a, did not include a picture of the inside of these, I should have, cause one thing they were pointing out was when you go into these interior spaces, they're fully finished, they have a concrete floor, they've got drywall, uh, and the way they were describing it, that's the, what they call the white box. So it, it's the top of the line in terms of what you leave the individual tenants to do. They said kind of at the other end of the scale, you have a dirt floor and two-by-fours o- on the walls. This is the, the top of the line, so the guy who's out there managing their construction now has worked for a number of developers and he was just constantly going on about how, how much of a higher standard everything is that they're doing here. So we think he'll be really pleased with it when it gets finished. And then right next to, to all this is In-N-Out, so uh, they're getting close to opening. We could tell you when they're planning to open, but then we'd have to kill you. They told us not to reveal that, but.
They don't want anybody capping out ahead of time?
There probably will be, um, we have a picture of uh, our city clerk trying to padlock himself to the door. Uh, so he'd be the first one in. So uh, you know, again, some shots here and, you know, some of the things that, if you recall when this, well, I don't think you saw the design, the first one that came in looked more like a traditional In-N-Out with the peaked red tile roof. We didn't really like that, Goodman didn't really like it, so we came up with this design, you know, which this commission saw and approved that really does a better job, we think of uh, playing off the same kind of architecture on the other buildings, the same sort of flat roofs and the cornice details and so on. But still very recognizably a- and In-N-Out. Um, so that's again the outside, very nice, you know, rock feature that they built here, uh, little retaining wall. And then that's the inside, so they were, the inside is, you know, pretty, pretty nailed down.
Yeah, they are getting close, aren't they?
They're getting very close. And then this is the outdoor seating area uh, over on the Hamner end of the building, if you recall from the, the plans that you saw, there's a big outdoor space at that sort of western end of the building that terminates in this, you know, very substantial shade structure, so knowing that it gets hot here, we provided a shady place for, for folks to eat their, their In-N-Out burgers. And of course, the iconic cross palm trees. And that's it, so uh, we'll, we'll be out there again and taking some more pictures for you. Uh, they're planning to have CR, or CR three and the Starbucks, they wanna have that open fairly soon. We're actually gonna be working with them on uh, getting them sort of an interim occupancy in that building, so they can get in there and start training their staff and get the, get the facility ready to open up, and then they're summertime away from opening up the retail buildings. So, so great progress out there, and we, once it's up and running, uh, definitely invite you to go out there and I think you'll enjoy it, so.
Very good. Okay, commissioners, communications? Hovey, Commissioner Hovey, anything? Commissioner Lacy?
I do not have any.
Commissioner Lee?
For Josh jumps in, um, the, the city happens to be uh, on the shortlist uh, for the active transportation program grant from the state. Uh, there's forty-five cities and counties in the state where, that were selected for the state round of funding, and we were successful in being one of those. Um, and it's for uh, well, the way it's worded is for north-south bike network gap closure and connectivity to northern Eastvale, what it is, it, it's gonna allow us to do uh, um, uh, multi-use path or uh, what they call cycle tracks, uh, the full length of Harrison from Chandler all the way up to the very north end and also Scholar uh, from Belgrave all the way down to Citrus. And it's a significant grand amount, uh, it's, the funding amount is six point five million. So um, that goes to the CT California Transportation Commission uh, early next month and then it'll go to the local agencies for final approval.
Very good.
I sent you guys an email on that earlier in the month, or maybe towards the end of last year. So if you checked your city email, you, you might have seen some information about that project. We were very excited to get those connections.
Yeah, Commissioner Lee?
Oh yeah, so kudos to staff for getting that funding, um, I worked on that. I work with state all the time on the ATP grants, I'm, I'm on, I was on the review panel, I'm on the, 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 I started working on that since the day one of the ATP active transportation program from the state. And it's a very competitive grant program, I mean, it is extremely competitive. Um, so, you know, good job, um, I know this was our, was it like second try, third try?
Oh, I think it's the third try.
Okay, I think it's.
Like two years ago, we tried and we made lots of comments to them about how they judge projects, but that, that all helped.
So yeah, again, it's a, it's a great project as well as, you know, that I just wanna commend um, staff for going after the funding and actually getting the funding, and I think we actually scored ninety out of hundred.
Ninety.
Yeah.
Yes, we were pretty close to the cutoff, uh, there, there's four Riverside Cities that got funding, but you figure forty-five cities and counties out of the whole state, and there were, I know there were hundreds of applications.
So, good job.
Uh, and I might also thank our regional partner, West Riverside Cog, because they uh, were the ones that funded our grant application. Uh, it, the application was about that thick to apply for this funding, and so uh, if you're gonna, it, it's about a ten, fifteen thousand dollar endeavor to put one of those grants together, so they, they helped fund that, so that there was no risk to the city to apply for these grants, and so. Uh, but we are putting in about a one-point-six million dollar match, but it's a great way to use uh, local dollars and extend them and, and, and quadruple their, uh, their uh, access to our residents, so we're very excited about this.
The total project cost is what, nine, nine million?
Eight million.
Okay.
And what's nice about these, these funds is they start nineteen-twenty, and so we can start the project this next fiscal year.
Very good. Well, I would like to announce the birth of my ninth grandchild to my daughter Felicia Weiss, Charlotte Weiss, and to my daughter Felicia and her husband David Weiss. So with that said, I'd like to adj- adjourn the meeting till next month. Thank you, everybody.